Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the Queen Anne's County Board of Education Work Session, Wednesday, November 18th, 2020. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We please stand for a moment of silence for all those people affected by COVID-19. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? I have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote on the motion to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Approval of minutes opened and closed for November 11th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
To move.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote on the motion to approve the minutes opened and closed for November 11th, 2020. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. We're at presentations this evening. We have been informed that Dr. Kane will be out at least past December 1st, 2020. We are grateful that Acting Superintendent Ms. Pauls is still with us. Good evening, and thank you all for being here with us. At the presentations, we have independent audit report, Mr. Chris Hall from the TGM Group and Ms. Jane Towers, our new CFO. Thank you very much.
Good evening, President Harper. I'd like to introduce Chris Hall's stand-in. This is Daniel Enzler. He worked on the site audit for us, and he's going to do the presentation. He did bring hard copies for everyone. If you like hard copies. If not, it is posted online too as well.
I would love a hard copy. That's great. And I know Mr. Smith will too. Ms. Morissette. And Mr. Daniel, I didn't get your last name.
Enzer, E-N-F-O-R.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here.
Enzer is one of our locals, former student.
Are you related to anyone who works here?
Yes. My brother and sister-in-law are employees.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Get those passed out. As we said, my name is Daniel Enzer. I'm a CPA with TGM Group, a public accounting firm in Salisbury, Maryland. We perform the annual audit of the board's financial statements fiscal year 2020. This is a second year of a five-year contract. Dive right in. Prepared this PowerPoint just to summarize what we're going to be discussing tonight. We're going to be reviewing your 2020 financial statements. And this is the organization of the financial statements. In the beginning section is Management's Discussion and Analysis. So it's about eight pages. That gives an overview of the financial statements. A summarized version, if you will, for someone who doesn't know anything about the operations of the board, they could pick up Management's Discussion and Analysis and have a summary and have a pretty good understanding of the year. After Management's Discussion and Analysis, we get into the basic financial statements, and they're separated. You have district-wide financial statements that include long-term assets and long-term liabilities. You also have fund financial statements, which is more what you're accustomed to seeing on a month-to-month basis. And that focuses on current assets and current liabilities. And then the notes to the financial statements. So those three sections combined are the basic financial statements, which is what we give our audit opinion on. Additionally, you have required supplementary information, which helps the user. It places the information in an operational, economic, and historical context. And then also additional supplementary information that is presented. And you move from more summarized version, summarized information at the beginning of the report to more detailed information. On page three of the financial statements, you will find our independent auditor's report. We expressed an unmodified opinion. That's the highest opinion that CPA can give. There are no qualifications. Your financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. Following the independent auditor's report is a report on internal control over financial reporting. It defines what a deficiency in internal control is. But the long and short of it is we did not identify any material weaknesses that needed to be communicated.
Which is defined as...
Material weakness is a deficiency or a combination of deficiencies that there is a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement will exist.
Defalcation.
It's significant enough, yes. As I briefly mentioned, Management's Discussion and Analysis is on pages eight through 16 of the financial report. There are a few financial highlights. Now, this is prepared by management, so the former CFO, John Pfister, prepared this. A few financial highlights. Obviously, the end of fiscal year 2020 was greatly impacted by COVID-19. A small silver lining in that is that the board experienced some savings. Your expenditures were below budget for fiscal year 2020. On the other side of the ledger, on a district-wide perspective, in the district-wide financial statements, your net position decreased 16.5 million.
What? Say that.
It decreased 16.5 million. And we'll take a look. But that is mainly attributed to other post-employment benefits. Healthcare for retirees. You have to, several years ago, government accounting standards wanted governments to put that liability on the books for future healthcare.
The OPEB.
So it increased a lot in fiscal year 2020, and it caused your net position to decrease.
Do other public entities try to put a fiduciary funding in order to try to deal with that? It's never going to go down because people are living longer. So do you find that?
Yeah, you set up a trust fund, and the board has a trust fund. And you contribute as you can. Right now, Queen Anne's County Board of Education is a pay-as-you-go. So once you receive the invoice...
So we have no balance to pay for surprises?
You have about $500,000 set aside, but...
Set aside.
One year to year. You're paying as you go. So as costs increase, as interest...
That hasn't been used?
No, it's reserved.
How is that expressed in the budget? Is it a fiduciary account that can only be used for that purpose? No evidence of borrowing or any of that business?
No borrowing.
Okay.
On page 18 is your statement of net position.
Question on that same thing. When did we lock? I don't remember. When did we lock the $500,000 into that? Or is that our choice? Or do you know?
It's been set aside for a number of years. It was just transferred to formal trust at the end of the year.
You did that only for our system? Or is that through MAB?
Not through MAB. It's a different... I'll have to look it up, and I'll give back to you. I think it's through a different account now. They switched it over. I think it's Wilmington Trust or something. But I'll look.
We discussed that last December.
We did. I was trying to remember though.
We made the motion on that last December to go into that trust.
We went into the trust, but I didn't know we had pulled away $500,000.
There was a large reserve.
It was already there?
Yes.
We didn't start a new one?
Didn't start a new one. It was already there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
To my recollection. We can... Ms. Towers can look that up. Thank you.
Of course.
So page 18 and page 19, these are referred to as your district-wide financial statements. And like I said, it includes long-term assets and long-term liabilities. You had about $15 million in cash and cash equivalents as of June 30. You had $157 million in land and capital assets, buildings, and such, for total assets of approximately $175 million. Your liabilities are about $245 million, and 225 of that relates to your OPEB liability. And...
Which is under...
On page 18, it's grouped with...
Yeah, I see it. Thank you.
Some other things. And then your net position is a deficit. It's $63 million deficit net position. It doesn't sound great, but you're not alone. A lot of boards of education are in the same position where the liability exceeds your assets. And so your net position is in a deficit.
How much of that is the OPEB then?
It's right there.
225. 225.
The total liability, yes.
So you see where liabilities is?
Yes.
Okay. And then you go down to total liabilities? And then just below that is pensions and then OPEB?
What would be an example of a fixed charge?
Healthcare. Pardon me? Healthcare.
Oh, that's where that is.
Retirement, yes.
And that's because GAFIA requires you to show on your books an accruing liability.
What is an example of an unrestricted deficit?
That's basically what's left over, the unrestricted deficit. So your net position, again, deficit of $63 million.
I'm just looking at the very bottom under net position.
Right. It's not a specific thing per se. It's just the remainder at the end of the day.
That's not like fund balance?
It is like fund balance.
Okay.
That $35 million would also include pension, would it not? Or is that strictly on the state's books?
What are you looking at?
You have a pension plan, which has a calculation on future... Actually, it's pretty simple. It's income earned minus pensions paid. But people live longer. More pension money goes out. Is that included in this $35 million?
You have a pension liability. It's not nearly as large as the OPEB. So it's about $5 million is your pension liability. That's because the state picks up a large part for teachers. I'm going to skip ahead to the fund financial statements, and that begins on page 20. This is probably more of what you're accustomed to seeing, the governmental funds. It excludes those long-term assets and long-term liabilities, and focuses on kind of a year operation. So you had $17.8 million in total assets, $12.4 million of total liabilities, and your fund balance was $5.4 million. And that includes the general fund, school construction fund, and food services. That is a... It was a $1.7 million increase from the previous year. So your fund balance increased by a little less than 50%. It's good news.
Of that, some is assigned though too, correct?
That's what I was going to ask. How much of that was already assigned?
Well, you have...
Do you find that on here? Because I don't see it.
I don't have prior year information to compare it to.
Oh, no. It is right here, under fund balances. It has committed and unassigned.
Correct.
And restricted. Okay. Thank you. What is an example of a non-spendable fund balance?
Something in a trust, in your Fund VII.
Okay. Thank you.
Assigned would be the purchase order. So as of that $5.4, only $2.3 is unassigned or obligated.
$2.3.
Correct.
Encumbered is the word we were...
Encumbered would be the assigned, some of the assigned $2.3 million. Correct.
The healthcare contribution to this fixed charge, where does the employee contribution fit into this? Is this net of estimated employee contribution?
That would be under healthcare reserves, isn't it?
So it's worse than I thought. Or is this typical for education systems?
It is. All the school systems that I know do the pay-to-pay-as-you-go type model.
On page 22 is the statement of revenues and expenditures and changes of fund balance for the governmental funds. This is revenues and expenditures. The total revenue is $117.6 million. Total expenditure is $115.9. And as I stated, the net change in fund balance is $1.7. Low context, in 2019, the change in fund balance was a negative $52,000. After you get through the governmental funds, on page 24 are the fiduciary funds, retiree health plan, trust fund. You also have regional education funds and school activity funds are included in the fiduciary funds.
But these are both fiduciary funds. They can't be used for anything except what they're designated to be used for.
Correct.
So this money really isn't something that can be used and shouldn't be used to offset anything other than...
Correct. Not for the general operation.
The net worth of the system. Such a thing could ever be used to a government entity.
Mr. Mark, the school activities funds of the 14 schools, they all have activity funds. So like the band, boost, any kind of boosters. So it's not a whole lot of money, considering it's got across 14 schools and knowing how much sports costs and how much the boosters raise. So yeah, that needs to be allocated. I mean, not taught, again, on a fiduciary funds. Can't be used for anything else.
But my question is, why can't... We have used... We tap into that money when we need to.
It's set aside, it's at the school level. So on page 62, we'll detail out, as Daniel was saying, that $797,000, which schools it is comprised of. And those are kept at the school location. It's their separate checking account. It's their separate funds.
Right. Their annual, just annual, the three renewed each year?
It does roll over. Any unspent will roll over to the next year for them to have available. Yes.
Yeah, that's not stuff that we have raised. That's what the schools have raised.
Schools have raised...
Schools, yes.
Yeah, that's not from the operating budget. Those are total fund, like the boosters, the band boosters, the football boosters, the chess club, you know, drama.
I'm thinking of something else that we go in and out of. That would be the operating budget that we provide to the schools.
PTAs. Exactly.
Well, I understand that now. I just... We do tap into other funds in our operating budget if we need to, things that we provide to the schools. Right? Those are listed somewhere else?
In addition to state and county funding, then you're thinking facilities, rental of facilities? Is that what you're thinking? Just thinking of some things that could come up?
Well, the coaches, the referees, athletic money, we handle. We decide to cut back on those operating funds for the schools.
Correct. There are expenditures that are allocated on an annual basis that you've approved in annual budget, and then they can be adjusted accordingly each budget year.
Okay. So these are different kinds, I see. I got it. Thank you. Where were the regional education funds? What are those?
There are ESMEC funds.
Sorry?
ESMEC?
ESMEC, okay.
Yes. There's an office in the finance wing. So the board...
Belongs to those?
Just kind of processes invoices, not our money.
Okay, got it.
The notes to the financial statements are from pages 26 through 48. You have a summary of your significant accounting policies on Note 2, and that runs for several pages. Your pension plan is on pages 34 through 40, and the OPEB liability is 41 through 46. And she'll give you all the information that you need on those items.
This is just a description?
Yes. It's just further explanation to the reader. Following the notes to the financial statements, you have required supplementary information, one being the budget-to-actual comparison. That's on page 50. We present the original budget, the final budget, and then an actual column.
Can I go to page 33 real quickly, please? Capital projects due to general fund, food services due to general fund. This is money that is still owed to us from the government?
No, these are just inter-fund balances. So you have the general fund, the capital projects fund, food services, and...
Oh, I see. It's a wash. I see it.
Yeah.
So these projections don't take into account pending legislation and its impact on costs. These are just what are existing by the year, fiscal year ending June 30. In other words, the legislature has been talking about a change in the starting salary over a period of time. If that were to occur over four years, it would be a substantial increase in the liability for pension. But this doesn't take into account that because it hasn't happened yet.
The actuarial does the OPEB calculation.
How could they do a calculation on something that hasn't occurred?
Right. So they'll probably adjust it each year as it occurs because it stair steps up to that $60,000. So you'll see it over the next couple of years, and you'll definitely probably see that decrease.
It's more than $60,000 per person because as the bottom increases, it causes a compression that creates a need for other adjustments.
Correct. Across the salary scales, yes.
So it's going to be a very expensive roll-up.
You're absolutely right.
To which there has been no source of revenue yet to be identified.
And you're talking in some terms that people in the public do not understand what you're talking about. You're talking about the teacher salaries and the actuariales.
That's been in the newspaper, yeah.
Well, some people don't understand what you're talking about.
But I just want to make sure that none of this has been built in yet.
What, cancer? This is...
That's because I just said that it hasn't really been formalized. So maybe not that piece.
Actuarial calculation is based on assumptions. Salary increases being one of those assumptions, interest rates.
Pension plans are easy to cost. They're very difficult to pay for. It's just you have to have enough money, earning enough interest to pay for projected pensions, benefits minus interest earned.
Page 39, you can see some of the assumptions that are included.
So you had to do some assumptions?
I did not know. This is done by actuary, and we use their work.
That's interesting, the investment rate of return. I'd like to have that now. Anyway, okay. Sorry, page 50? Yeah. Is that where we headed, page 50?
Yes. That is the budget-to-actual comparison. Kind of lays out the savings that we've talked about on the expense side. Revenues exceeded expenditures by $1.5 million. Also, the required supplementary information includes some additional OPEB and pension schedules. That's on 51, 52, and 53, and 54.
Generally speaking, for a county this size, these are not surprising numbers to you at all. And as a matter of fact, they might be better than other counties this size or maybe other counties that are larger. The percent and so forth. We're not out of whack.
You're not out of whack. You're about the same. Very few other school systems are setting aside money for pension or OPEB.
As I recall, even the life insurance premiums went up. These are nasty surprises over which we have no control. We just get told this is what it is. Late in the game.
I don't think it's late in the game, sir. I think everybody's aware of it. Just don't have a way to fund it.
This excess, where is that?
It goes to fund balance, and it will be utilized in future periods.
So we got an extra one and a $1.5 million fund balance right now?
We have $2.3 unassigned. $2.3 and unassigned.
Oh, yeah, unassigned, okay.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
So we'll go to balance future budgets.
What people do not understand that propose these things is it isn't just the cost of entry salaries. There is a compression roll-up. There's a benefit cost roll-up. There is this, there is that. Workman's co... Everything is rolled up. So the total cost is a big number.
Yes, and potentially required by law too.
So the capital project expenditures, Ms. Towers, this has already been done on page 60? We've already... It's already been paid for and done? That was this year?
Yes. Those were FY '20 expenditures. So after required supplementary information, you have additional supplementary information. Those schedules, one being a combining schedule for capital projects and food service. Your general fund is a major fund, so it is presented by itself on the earlier pages. School construction and food service are presented in combination previously. Then in the additional supplementary information, they're presented separately. So that's on page 58. You have a detail of the capital project expenditures on page 59. I'm sorry, that's page 60. Food service fund on 61, and the detail of the school activity funds on page 62.
So that is a deficit. And on page 61?
Page 61.
The food service fund?
Food service for the year had a loss of about $24,000. And that's in line with what we've seen in other school boards. And that's in line with what we've seen in other school boards. The general fund had some expense savings, while food service had a loss for the year, and you're providing meals to the community.
For COVID, yeah. Well, we didn't get some of the state...
We weren't reimbursed.
Yeah, we weren't reimbursed.
Yes, you're getting reimbursed.
On some of it, we were. So but this is what is left after all the reimbursements?
For the year, yeah, you had a loss.
Negative, yes. Well, past this, we were still feeding, so.
Yes.
Whole summer, we were feeding.
That's the financial statements. You have one additional report in front of you, the audit communications. Should be brief with this. This is required communications with the board, those charged with governance. As we stated, the significant accounting policies of the board are on note two of the financial statements. No new accounting policies were adopted during fiscal year 2020. If there were accounting standards that were going to be implemented in 2020, they got delayed one year because of COVID-19. Also, as we've discussed, financial statements include significant estimates and inherent estimates, one being depreciation on your capital assets. You buy the asset, you depreciate it over its estimated useful life, so it's an estimate. And also, the pension liability and the OPEB liability are based on estimates. It's actuarial valuation.
We set up a depreciation schedule. We don't depreciate to zero. We appreciate to a certain point of useful life.
No, it's just...
Appreciate it to zero.
Yes.
A school building has so many years of useful life, and so the schedule depreciates its value to the end of its useful life.
Significant renovations would be...
Remembering things from a distant past.
Yeah.
Putting on your county commissioner hat?
No, founding a business.
So just a few other things. We didn't encounter any difficulties dealing with management during our audit. Any recommendations or adjustments that we recommended, they were made.
See one that is useful under current year comments.
We have one that, as we continue to flip through here, on page eight of the audit communications, we talk about some recently issued GASB announcements, one dealing with fiduciary activities, and that specifically deals with the school activities fund. Once this is adopted next year, fiscal year 2021, the school activities fund will no longer be presented as a fiduciary fund. It will come under the governmental fund. Reason being, the board, in a roundabout way, can dictate how those monies are spent. So they can be kept at the school level, but they're just going to be shown on a different page.
Is that becoming law? Is that why it's coming?
It's a new accounting pronouncement, yes.
It allows flexibility to do that. It doesn't mean it has to be done that way.
It's more of a presentation issue.
Are we still...? Are we still...? We had a lot of problems with this school fund last year or year before, and we were trying to fix them. They were in an audit, because there wasn't a lot of accountability at the school level, the way it was collected, the way it was spent. There's a lot of opportunity for...
And that gets into our comment. We didn't identify any material weaknesses. We had one audit comment, and it's really, it's to keep it in front of you, to make sure everyone's aware. And it's a little bit of a mute point in a virtual learning environment.
Right.
But the schools are decentralized. They have their own bank accounts, and I think people underestimate how much money flows through those accounts. Over $1 million in FY '20. It was over 1.5 million in fiscal year 2019. And so just need everyone to be aware that the cash handling at the school level is a risk, and we want to get that money to the bank as soon as possible.
And I think we were putting... My brain's not working right, but we were talking about putting in some checks and balances. We didn't have any of that. And I don't know if we ever got there, or we stepped toward it or something.
Yes, there was improvement. I'll continue to stress, as your auditor, I'd like to see money go to the bank every day. It may not be feasible for everyone, so at least once a week. But I'd rather see someone take $1,000 to the bank rather than hold that money and take $10,000 to the bank every two weeks or so.
Are we talking about cash? Are we talking about checks? Are we talking about both?
Talking about both. This is at the school level, and that's probably where most of the cash is.
Staff and I met about this when I got the audit communication, and we have some ideas as a group, and we're going to present it to Ms. Pauls in a couple of weeks, and present it maybe to ANS and get feedback, and just strengthen. There's always room to strengthen what we're doing, so we're definitely looking into that.
That's great. Glad to hear that.
Definitely. If I could take this moment to thank the finance staff, very dedicated staff, to get an unqualified opinion, to have a... Just hats off to the hard work. It's just a lot of hard work that goes behind this, and I definitely want to acknowledge their work.
Thank you. Now, we send this over to the county commissioners and to the state.
It was submitted to MSD by September 30th is their deadline, so it's been submitted.
It's already been gone?
Yes.
Okay.
And then do we have to present it to the commissioners, I'm thinking, normally? Is that the procedure?
Or we just send it over to... Just send it over to Jonathan Siemens? That'd be great.
Okay, of course.
He has questions.
Do we have a committee that talks to their committee?
It would be. It would be Ms. Towers would speak to Jonathan Siemens over there at the county.
I'll reach out tomorrow then.
You'll be talking to him, yeah, and then answer any of his questions, of course.
And there's some things coming that need to be aware of.
Well, we have our meeting with them December 1st or December 7th?
I think that was canceled. I know that Ms. Pollan and I will be going over to talk a little bit about capital projects.
Okay. We'll find out if Mr. Siemens wants to bring to meeting. How you guys can handle that.
I also want to give commendations for Ms. Towers. She's only been here for a short period of time, but she really has done an amazing job with understanding our budget and sharing with me and keeping me updated about the funds. So kudos to Jane as well.
Appreciate it.
And to the entire team. They do a great job.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Thanks for coming tonight.
Absolutely.
Happy holidays. Is Ms. Forbes out there, or is...
Ms. Endor, how long have you been here doing this audit?
This is our second year.
I mean, how long has it taken to get this prepared? I was wondering.
How long does it take?
I mean, how long were you here to prepare this?
We're on site for several weeks in August, and then spend the last couple of weeks in September pulling it all together.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, sir. Thanks, Ms. Towers. Appreciate it. Ms. Forbes, TPE data?
Hi. Hi, good evening, everyone.
You can take it off if you like, because it's hard to hear.
Perfect, thanks.
Thank you.
And I'm alone, so.
That's okay.
So hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Julie Forbes. I'm the supervisor of accountability, assessment, and data management. And this evening, I'm going to share some data from the teacher and principal evaluations from 2019, 2020. And this is data that we share on an annual basis. So tonight, I'm just going to do a brief overview of the components of the evaluation, and also just an explanation of how it changed this year due to a waiver that was issued by the Maryland State Department of Education due to the COVID-19 school closures. And again, just review those evaluation ratings, look at how the two years differ, and then look at the data. So teachers and principals receive an annual comprehensive evaluation. In a typical year, it is based partially on professional practice and also on student growth. Due to the COVID-19 closure, a waiver was issued by the Maryland State Department of Education to waive the student growth component, mainly because students were not in buildings to take assessments that would then determine if they had made the progress and met the goals that were set. So due to that, the comprehensive evaluation score is based solely on that professional practice piece, and that waiver was issued in April of 2020. And based on the calculations, teachers and principals are identified as highly effective, effective, developing, or ineffective. And this just gives a little bit more detail about the different ratings, and based on, you know, tenured versus non-tenured teachers, the rating of developing is used for non-tenured. Gives a little more detail. The professional practice domains look at planning and preparation, instruction and assessment, classroom environment, and professional responsibilities. And then due to, again, the waiver, we don't have that student growth component that we normally have, so the comprehensive evaluations were based solely on those domains. And similar for principals, they receive that evaluation on an annual basis. The developing rating is used for newer, new principals, and there are 10 components that are looked at for principals, and they're all listed there. So this is a slide just as a reference. So this is the evaluation model for the current year, because we do not have the waiver in place this year, because the intent is that we'll be able to give those spring assessments. So I share this for context, and this is how evaluations were calculated for 2018-19. So when I shared data last year for the prior year, this was basically what we were looking at. Typically, the teacher evaluation is 50% based on the student growth and 50% based on those professional practices. And then you can kind of see the point breakdown, and then those two scores are combined for the comprehensive score, and the table on the bottom tells you how those different comprehensive scores are assigned based on the points, and it gives the range.
What kind of discussion do you get from a person that's rated effective and scored 20 points?
You know, those conversations happen at the school site, and I imagine the question might be asked, what do I need to do? You know, how can I improve to that highly effective status?
That's the difficult... With a numerical system.
It is.
And teachers have set goals, so a lot of the discussion will be based on the goals that they've set.
Okay. And then due to the waiver, the teacher evaluation was modified based on the waiver, and the student growth component was removed. And so those professional practices became 100% of the score, and the range for the different ratings is shown here. And that was the range that was set. So instead of 24 points, we're now talking about 12. And similarly, this slide captures the principal evaluation, so again, how principal evaluations will be tabulated this year, and they were previously for 2018-19. So again, 50% on the professional practices and 50% on the student growth component. And then that table on the bottom covers how they earn that comprehensive score as highly effective, developing, or ineffective. Then again, the removal of the student growth component shows how that breakdown happened. So then it was just, again, added 12 points, similar to the teachers. And so this captures the actual results of the comprehensive evaluations that were issued for 2019-20 for teachers. There were 542 evaluations that were completed, and of those, when you compare it to the prior year data, actually, there was an increase in the highly effective and effective ratings. So we did see some teachers shift over, so.
What is the incentive for teachers to improve if they're already highly effective? To stay there, is the, I guess?
I would think that's certainly a component, and we have many fine, excellent educators who I think are always striving for that highest level.
Independent on their goals for the year, because their goals change each year. So it could vary. Most principals would ask teachers to up the ante a little bit.
Okay, and then this captures the evaluation results for our principals. And again, everyone, all of our principals were effective and highly effective, very similar to the teachers. The teachers in the ineffective and developing category were less than 1%. And when you compare the principal data to the prior year, the category where you really saw some movement was in the highly effective category, more people moving into highly effective.
And some of that was due to the ratings that come back from MSD. We had several schools who made large increases with their student data from the year before. So...
With their what?
We had five-star schools.
Oh, the stars?
Yep, we had five, several, I think three or four, five-star schools. We had blue-ribbon schools, so.
Very exciting. That's what we like to see. And so, and of course, we will continue, and we're in the midst of the evaluation process this year with the more complicated calculation, because we do have the student growth component back in for this year, unless anything changes, but that's based on the current status.
Still in for now.
Yes, still for now. Anything's possible. But right now, the student growth component is a piece of the evaluation.
Are there any disagreements between the supervised and the supervisor, and how is that mitigated or smoothed over? I don't need to know names and places, but that's a very difficult conversation.
So teachers write their SLO, their student learning outcomes, and they have measures that they follow to achieve those goals. So midpoint through the year, there's conversations with principals and teachers to just kind of talk about progress or lack of progress. And teachers have the opportunity to make changes if they need to make changes at that particular point in time. If they see there's some type of extenuating circumstance where they cannot meet that goal, they're able to change those goals. So usually, they're pretty much on track as to where they will, and it's all rubric-based. So they pretty much have an idea of where they're probably going to fall out towards the end of the year. So I've not heard of any real strong disagreements, but that doesn't mean that they haven't happened.
There's two ways to look at it. One, there's a lot of trust between the evaluator and those being evaluated. The other way of looking at it is the goals are too easy to attain.
Well, they have to be approved.
That's true.
Yeah, they have to be approved by the principal.
Yeah.
And they have conversations when they set those goals, and it's based on data. You know, usually, your pre-assessment data and where you think you will move your students. And so many of them are pretty lofty, and some of them are based on state assessments, so they really don't have, you know, too much of an opportunity to argue it. I mean, they set, I think that, I feel like the teachers set really strong goals and worked really hard to achieve them, to make sure that every child is achieving, so.
Well, I think it shows in our student performance.
Yes. Anybody else?
I have one. And this is something that in the future, and perhaps, you know, we get a new superintendent, we do not have a method, and I don't know if other schools, school systems do, to evaluate executive team. We do a lot of evaluation of principals and, you know, administrators and the teachers, but we have no, as far as we know, there's no set way that the executive team is, unless it's just a leadership thing where if you're a good leader, you tell them what do you expect at the beginning of the year, and they have to meet that requirement. We have none of that, as far as I know. Do other school systems have that?
They do. They do have. I know that Dr. Kane met with her leadership team, and they kind of set goals, and they had meetings throughout the year to talk about meeting those goals. So Ms. Bass might be able to talk a little bit more about that since she's gone through it, but it's a similar process. They just don't, they're not always tied to student performance.
Are they, do they have it written down where they get counseling, midway counseling and all that, or?
I certainly did. The former team, superintendent certainly did have that done. It's done each year, and like Superintendent Paul says, it's not tied to student learning objectives. It's more the district. It speaks to the mission that we're on. So we have it, and then we have a January meeting to make sure we are where we're supposed to be based on the August conversation.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Thank you. That's enlightening. Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Forbes? Thank you very much. Happy holidays.
You, too.
Well, at least happy Thanksgiving. I know I'll see you in December.
Yes.
Mr. Combs, is he here? Mr. Combs, is he here?
It's Ms. Passan, his next new teacher.
Ms. Passan? Come on down, Ms. Passan. Principal and teacher mentoring program. Ms. Bridgette, no, long time no see.
Long time no see.
Get some more of those brownies.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Harper, and members of the executive team, Ms. Pauls and members, no, Ms. Harper, members of the board, Ms. Pauls and members of the executive team. For the record, my name is Bridgette Passan.
Yeah, please.
Since I'm by myself, if that's okay.
Please.
My primary role with the district is, is as the ELA supervisor for intermediate through high school grades. This year, I've gained an exciting new role that I'm embarking on as the mentor program coordinator. So in, and I'll just set the context for how this was assigned to me. So in the late spring, early summer, the executive team decided to take the mentor program in a different direction. In the prior years, we have had retiree hires come back and support our new teachers, and they decided to have us pair new teachers with master teachers in their building. So this, researching this and looking at how it was done in other places in the state and across the country, was given to Tiger Team Six, which I happen to be a member of. So as with anything, it always helps when there's a central office liaison for our initiatives. Interestingly enough, this component of, of the new teacher program falls under the big umbrella of professional learning at MSDE. The grant that I manage, the Title II A grant, falls under that professional learning at MSDE. So this was also kind of a natural fit because the work and training I do to manage Title II A, a subcomponent of that is the new teacher in the mentor program. So that's why you're seeing this, this new title, this new role under my name. Any questions about that or how that was decided? Okay.
That Title II, I mean, that Title II money, though, is, it's got its own whole purpose, right?
Yes, for profession, for the hiring, developing, and retaining of teachers and principals. Another piece of the, the main office at MSDE who controls Title II, they also oversee the induction program.
Okay.
So these are people with whom I have relationships. There is money that we could certainly use for the hiring and training for new teachers. We don't get a lot of money in Title II A. We don't necessarily to do that, so that's why they kind of.
And I thought it was specific to a certain group or not? It's just strictly professional development, your Title II?
Title II is, but it's lots of different things. It has to do with anything that will lead to training any kind of stakeholder in the school system.
Oh, okay.
All right. Okay. All right. So my purpose here today as well is, oh, I'm sliding down. Okay. To provide you an update of what we did for New Teacher Orientation Week, which I also take the lead on, new teacher professional learning activities in compliance with COMAR. So what I show you here is all in compliance with, with the COMAR regulation. There's three things I'll talk about tonight. I'll talk about what we do during New Teacher Orientation Week and how that looked this year due to COVID-19. I'll talk briefly about the professional development models that our teacher specialists and academic deans use, and I'll share information about the current direction of the teacher mentor program. Just some data here for our certified hires by school year, and I kept information from last year so you could kind of see the trends. As you see, definitely a dip in this past year of hiring. We only had 29 new hires, which is certainly a change from the years we are mostly closer to 40. And again, a lot less movement due to the pandemic. Nonetheless, we greeted those 29 new hires. In the week before, we had all teachers come back. That was August 17th to August 21st. And you can see there, I had approximately 25 new hires. So I apologize for being far off in the chart above. This was all done virtually. So our new hires had the choice to, we had them come into their schoolhouses the first day so they could see where they were going to teach, so they could be in their classroom. And then we gave them a choice the remainder of the week where they felt more comfortable. Majority of them did choose to go into their buildings. They were welcomed by Dr. Kane and Mr. Paluski. They got a wonderful message from Ms. Wright, our teacher of the year. And then we did all our sessions with them virtually. They met with Comtech, they met with their respective CNI supervisors, the Office of Accountability, and Human Resources. They also had school-based sessions, and the Education Association hosted two different virtual meetings. So lots of, lots of opportunities to greet them and welcome them and onboard them to, to Queen Anne's County Public Schools. Part of the professional development that these new teachers receive includes monthly support, monthly meetings with their academic deans at the high schools or their teacher specialists. This year, which I'll talk more about later in the presentation, they have a school-based mentor. So to support their planning, their management, their instruction, and their professional responsibilities. Additionally, we have that two-credit course that they take during their second year of teaching. Okay. So everything I'm going to show you, I also showed to the principals, and I am conducting new mentor orientation and training tomorrow evening from 3:30 to 6:30. So they will also see this information. So this information comes directly out of what we submit to the state in our strategic plan to show them how we are adhering to COMAR. And there are four pieces under this part of the plan, and the new teacher induction program that they require information on. So the description of the teacher induction, description of our mentors, the scope of the mentor program, and then the mentor program evaluation. So you can see a lot of those components have to do with the mentor program. Yes, sir.
How do the new teachers get hooked up with a mentor?
I'm going to tell you in a couple more.
I figured so.
Okay. Okay. So just a reminder that our new teacher inductions, they, our new teachers for the mentor program, for the induction program are brand-new to their profession. They have never taught anywhere at any time, and they receive these services and this support until they're granted tenure. Veteran teachers who come to us from other states or other districts in Maryland participate in these activities at a minimum their first year, and then they can make a decision with their principal if they would like to continue with them or need to continue with them beyond their first year. So this year, of the 29 that we eventually hired, only six of them are brand-new to the profession. So we were able to take these six as well as teachers, year-two teachers. So those teachers in their second year of teaching, there are 10 of them. And then we have one year-three new teacher who was still getting the support of a mentor. So part of the work that Tiger Team Six did to get ready for this new program is we created a job description of what a mentor would be expected to do, what a mentor who is also a full-time teacher would be expected to do. So principals were given this description and asked to pair their new hire with a master teacher in the building, preferably a master teacher who was also in the same content. In many of these cases, that worked out. Of the 16, I would say that's the case in about 12 of them. In some cases, they didn't necessarily have that, or they have a teacher whose leadership skills they're working to develop and who can do that in this mentoring, which involves coaching as well. So they selected them for that reason. In two of these instances, the new teachers teach special music. Now, in our buildings, in our elementary and middle particular, there's only one, one teacher. So that can be difficult to pair them up with. Luckily, they have been paired because principals spoke to each other and decided they've been paired with a teacher who works in a school that is physically close to the school in which they teach. All of this will be happening virtually this year. But the selection was purposely made with the principals informed of the expectations, reviewing their, their staff list, thinking about their faculty, and pairing them up accordingly. Did I, did I answer your question? Okay, good. That's what I was hoping to do with this slide. Okay. All right. So just to show you kind of how it all shakes out and so that you're seeing the exact same information that our principals and our mentors will see, this is a real partnership between the new teacher and the mentor. So the, the real hope is that they can spend two hours per week engaged in coaching and planning and an informal observation. Understandably enough, our principals had concerns about two hours under the current situation and with all that our teachers are doing this year to teach in a, in a distance platform. It is a lot. And essentially, we're, you know, all of our teachers are new teachers this year. While good instruction in the classroom is good instruction in distance learning, there are so many new resources that we have to get familiar with, with learning. And so they were concerned about that, so we compromised on a minimum of one at this current time. And I did reach out to the state just to make sure, you know, that things were okay, and the state is very supportive of that and very flexible with that because of COVID-19. Following all that work, the principal and I also share a partnership in monitoring that and making sure all the, the i's get dotted and the t's get crossed. So we have to watch for payroll. There's a log that mentors have to fill out indicating the work that they did with their mentee during that hour or during both those hours. The mentor is encouraged to reach out to the principal just to touch base, but also if there's any issues. And I'll do, I'll touch base with the mentors on, on a monthly basis, virtual, in kind of an informal setting, and then bimonthly in a formal meeting. We hope to get them in to observe other teachers, and I'll talk to the new mentors tomorrow night about this and how we're going to work this out so they can see another teacher of their content who is really doing well, and all our teachers are doing well. I've been observing and talking to specialists, and there's so many good things happening. But so they can see another teacher of their content teach, and they can observe, and then they can have a reflection session with their mentor. There's responsibilities there that were explained in the strategic plan between the principal and me, because I'm saying, watching payroll and making sure that the work gets done by reviewing those logs. The training for mentors, again, my, this program got finally formalized and put together late October, early, early this month. So the first official training for them is a three-hour training tomorrow evening. And then my hope is to meet with them bimonthly, virtually as long as possible, in January, March, and May. And it's my job to design that relevant, timely PD for them.
Ms. Bass, why the late start? Late start on the mentors.
Well, when we came back as Tiger Teams in September, everything was getting approved and finalized, and there were lots of, there happened to be just, you know, other priorities ahead of this from disseminating the information and gathering it. So it probably went out three weeks into September with all the principals had on their lists. I, I gave them till early, mid-October to start giving me names. I held some meetings because they had some additional questions, and then it all, it all got sealed.
So our new, our new teachers, how are they doing?
So interestingly enough, they, several of our principals had already gone ahead and done this, and we got the okay from payroll to back pay.
Okay.
Those people who were acting as mentors, they've been getting support from their chairs or their teacher specialists, reading specialist, math specialist, in any event. And they've also, and again, in using my other, putting my other hat on and talking with my reading specialist today, teams have really rallied around each other in supporting one another and around their new teachers.
That's great.
So they have not been out there flying on their own. They have been supported, but we're going to make that, this, the support way more targeted and guided.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Great, no, great question, and I should have addressed that. Thank you, Ms. Harper.
Well, I just happened to catch it, but thank you very much.
Something that might have been happening, I can't, I, they're probably young, and so they're probably very good at virtual learning. So there's probably some co-teaching going on back and forth.
Yes, it will be a real partnership this year. The technological savviness of, of our new hires, I've learned by watching them in presentations, or informal observations. So that is, that is a really good point as well. So we supervise them together, again, with all those formal pieces of watching payroll, watching their logs, making sure we're reaching out to them to discuss all that's going well and maybe address any concerns that they might be having with their mentee. And then it, we have to monitor the scope of it. So there, this is where we bring HR into the fold, which I know Vanessa and her team always, you know, help out with getting me numbers, and those numbers you saw earlier as soon as possible, and then reporting to the state. So they get us the new hire data, including certification, years teaching. So we're able to start there to figure out, okay, who, who is brand-new to the profession and needs a mentor and for how many years. We'll also survey the principal several times regarding how it's going and getting the names of, of the master teachers with whom they're pairing the mentees up with. And then I'm responsible for reporting out on all those numbers and the roles of the mentor. Excuse me. So in learning more about this, we have always surveyed all stakeholders on the mentoring program, and that will continue to happen. I've been nudged to look at some resources from WestEd, which has published many things on mentoring teachers. So I'll look at that as well to, to, to adjust some of the surveys for this new direction of the program as to how our mentor program went this year, the stage that it's at, you know, and hopefully next year I can come back to you with some data, with data to show you how this year, and especially in the circumstances, the mentor program and the new teacher induction program occurred.
Any questions?
Any questions for me?
I think you might want to check with the state because we had to write a policy when we first instituted the, the mentor program. Ms. Draper was responsible for that.
Okay.
So somewhere up there in that file, there was a policy that had to be written, and then a copy of the new plan has to go to MSDE as well, too. And I think it would be nice, this would be for Ms. Bass, that if the mentors at least were acknowledged or got some type of thank you that, for the service, because some of them had worked as mentors for over 10 years, and they never received any type of letter or anything, that there wouldn't be a mentor program this year. So many of them were calling me, asking me, and I was like, why? You know, I don't know. So some of them realized it when their email was cut off. They said, we don't have email anymore what to do.
Oh, goodness.
So I think it would be nice to at least acknowledge some of them who have been around for years. I think.
A lot of our retirees have come back and been mentors.
Yep, over the years.
Over the years. And we're grateful for them. We need to, we really do need to acknowledge them. Thank you, Ms. Bass.
That's a great idea. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Passan.
That's an excellent point because then if we have a database of who is experienced in mentoring, we can mentor the new mentors.
Yeah, and a lot of them weren't coming back anyway, just because of the whole COVID thing and, and, you know, the age. But I might have a copy of that policy and all of that.
Okay.
I might have it somewhere electronically. I know it's in the file cabinet, but I might have it electronically, so that will be very helpful for you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Pauls.
Thank you, Ms. Passan.
All right. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
You want to yell to Mr. Combs out there? Michelle? Oh.
Good evening. You take it off, sir, it's fine.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Josh Combs. I am the Technology Systems Supervisor here. Tonight, I'm going to recap our five-year capital technology plan, our Phase Two. We are in Year Two already.
Crazy.
Out of the five so far. Let's get down to the, now, the first year is an overview of what we requested versus our adjusted amount. So we requested 1.6, we got 1.2. And then I laid out at the bottom what we cut. So we cut out infrastructure upgrades, school requests. Instead of buying brand-new laptops for the teachers and doing leasing, we had to buy off-lease laptops in order to make the numbers work. This was the first year, or the second time that we did nine through 12 high school student laptops. So that was our primary concern, was getting the students their laptops. And then paying the lease for the Dell Chromebooks from the year before. That would have been the second year for fifth or eighth. That's what we did last year. This year, we originally asked for 1.9. County total is 1.4. That's what they budgeted for their plan. That's what they put in the books as of last year. Now, they turned around and cut $200,000 this year out of it. So reality, we only got 1.2 for this year. So one of the things we did is, I haven't done anything with Power School yet. We did replace the firewall, got redone a firewall and better firewall. We had to cut out school requests. We were able to, between the grants and capital, we were able to do third and fourth grade Chromebooks. That's where that purchase came from. Since we didn't have to, we didn't do leases for laptops from the previous year, that was normally wasn't going to be my plan, so we didn't have to worry about that. And then paying off the lease payments from the high school laptops and the middle school Chromebooks. And those are payments that just keep us here repeating every single year until they're paid off. We do four-year leases for the schools. Next year.
Josh, I have one question.
No, go for it.
It's like the second year we've taken out these school requests. What is it there?
That could be something like, it could be projectors, it could be, it's technology stuff that's usually over $1,000 that the schools request.
Crash carts?
Carts could be, yeah.
I call it crash carts, but carts?
Yeah, yes. Laptop carts. It's anything that's outside this, the normal plan, but the school still needs it for technology. So most time it's, it could be interactive flat panels, it could be projectors, it's kind of in that realm.
Or a teacher's wish list.
Basically, yes.
I think it's interesting, though, that when we went to CES, they, they had a smartboard and that made it easier for them to project while they're doing it online with the students in class.
CES in Centerville.
And that was donated by the PTAs.
Yeah, CES in Churchill, between Title I, or PTA, they were able to purchase some of these interactive flat panels. I do like them, they're, Fire Simmons projector, but it's just a TV and it's touch, connects to the laptop, basically the same thing, but.
Sellersville has a lot of.
Sellersville, yes.
Those panels would be very beneficial for your special needs classrooms.
Some of them did, they had smart tables.
Michelle, I couldn't hear a word you said.
Some of those TV screens you're talking about would be very beneficial for special needs classrooms because you have students with low vision.
Judy has, Judy has purchased some down at Sellersville. And they originally, the one that first came up, the idea, they have the smart tables. They're the first ones that kind of had it and that kind of led to these TV design, the TV design.
I've seen both and the whiteboard's kind of cloudy looking and the user's sharp. So somebody with a low vision issue could see what's being.
The only difference with those is they cost a lot more money upfront. You get, the return investment, you do get it, get it, but you got to pay more money upfront in order to get one initially. It's cheaper, more expensive than projector, but you get a return about five years, you get a return on your money because it'll last, factor-wise, they say it'll last 10 years, so, which is a lot longer than a standard projector.
Those kinds of things are, you know, if we've got CARES money left over, I mean, they fall right in with the idea of CARES, I would think, because we're all forced to do virtual. So it's a reflection of, in my mind.
We need to get a gig first.
Pardon?
Yeah.
And Ms. Towers has a handle on that money. Actually, we met today and she kind of talked about what's there. Some of the accounts have been spent out, but there's, there's a little bit of money. But there are restrictions on what can be purchased as well, too, with some of it, so.
Can we get an update on that at the December meeting? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next year, what we had on the plan was replacement of our Queens County SAN, which is where all of our primary data center servers and all of our staff files and backups are stored.
This historic thing, you keep asking for close to two and we're getting one, three?
Yes, yes. They pretty much, what they said, they put in 1.4 for the next six years, that's what they said. And then, so I kind of knew I had adjusted back down to 1.4 from my request and that's what you're seeing here. Now, the past two years, we got cut an additional 200 on top of that.
So Josh, you have on here laptops are teachers' lease year three, so we didn't get them new?
We did not do a lease purchase because we just purchased them outright in year one.
Year one.
Year one or year two.
Okay.
So that was, that was, I'm just showing you that's what I cut, that's what it would have been part of my plan since we didn't have to do a lease. That line item is no longer needed, therefore you get that money back. Next year's kind of primary focus for me was the high school and elementary lab desktop computers and then PLTW and CAD lab computers, basically the lab computers, all the lab computers.
Where's the first and second grade computers?
That was not, never part of our plan, wasn't part of Phase One, it was never part of Phase Two.
So how did we purchase that?
We purchased that through the state grant.
Gotcha, thank you. Thanks for reminding me.
And then, again.
So year four is going to have to be readjusted to 1.4?
Yeah, you got it. Yeah, you see the rent, you see.
I see it.
You see the, yes, so.
So the classroom desktops are going to have to go away?
Uh, yeah.
Or the other teachers?
Yeah, obviously, we always focus on the student device first and then we have to back up from there. Sometimes I have to back up from infrastructure in order if we can meet the needs of the teachers as well. So, and then the fourth year, yeah, what I have is, we originally had on the plan, again, it works if we get 1.4, if we're not, then we have to make adjustments, which was replacing the servers at the schools. We'll be hitting the five-year cycle for that. Classroom desktops, again, we're hitting the four or five-year cycle for that. Same thing for sped, special education staff laptops are a one-year difference between the classroom teacher desktops, they were bought a year before. So that's why it's, you see it's offset and when they get replaced versus when the teachers get, the classroom teachers get replaced. And then the fifth year, we're basically starting, again, with the high school laptops, replacing the high school laptops. Another thing on year five, uh, year four, we'll be starting, again, replacing the fifth and eighth grade student Chromebooks during a four-year lease.
How often do you have to replace switches?
S.
Wait, don't you have like?
Oh, uh, switches, well, servers, we generally do a five-year warranty. I try to keep it running as long as I can until the warranty, I can no longer get a warranty. Once I don't get a warranty, then we're in a bad situation. So it's one of those things where if I have to cut it and I can get a warranty instead of maybe hardware, then I'll go that route in order to save money for buying student equipment. Because that's a big important year because in year four, we're doing fifth or eighth again. Four, so that's obviously going to be our number one, is getting the middle school Chromebooks replaced.
Okay.
So everything else will fall after we figure out how much that costs.
Okay. All right, anybody have any questions?
I got one last year, but.
I got one, you, you, you do, you do, you got the Dell and you've got the Chromebook. I mean, you got the Dell and then you've got the old one, are they all Dell?
They're all Dell.
Okay, nevermind, thank you.
And the final, of the plan, that's where basically, we did middle school the year before and then the next year, the last year of this plan, we're starting to replace the high school laptops for another four-year cycle for the high school laptops. And those would be the Dell latitude and be, we use Windows 10. And then we also do PLTW laptop carts for those programs also get done at that time. And as for like CTE classes, the engineering and all those type of courses at the middle school, they use, they have to use laptops because all the CAD stuff for it doesn't run on a Chromebook, so we have different machines for the PLTW courses. And most likely, like someone's saving money, I don't, we're trying to get away from content filter physical servers, so some of these things, you know, I can cut back in order to get in this final year to get the school laptops purchased and PLTW is done first.
That's great. Any other questions? No?
Yep.
At the end of the five-year program, all students will have Chromebooks or Dell books. All students will know how to use these pieces of equipment and the teachers will know how to teach students that have these.
Yeah, for the most part, we're in basically what I call Phase Two. We've already did our first five years, we're now basically, when thinking about year seven and doing this, so the only exception for this time, this will be the first time we've ever had to put them in the hands of first and second. So it's, you know, we got to get those kids up to speed on Chromebooks. So it'll be the first time from this year. That's what we're, that's what's going to be coming here shortly by Thanksgiving break, is trying to get it down to first and second. So everybody else, they've, they've had them from the, you know, the years before, so I think we'll be very comfortable with them.
And all of this will be at a total capital cost of?
Uh, let's see, I have to go right at the beginning, I believe I have the total. Basically, I can tell you, we had, basically, they gave us 1.4 for five years. 1.2 the first year, and we're just adding 1.4, so that's what the county put aside for our budget.
Talking about $5.6 million.
Yep, that sounds right.
And the students keep, keep it year to year when they're in the same school.
Yes.
They get it, they.
So if you started in sixth grade, you're going to keep that same device from seventh to eighth, and then when you go to the next building, you get the devices for that next
This incorporates the replacement of equipment as it ceases to be techno.
Yeah, most of our, of the schedules and counties we talk to, we, we all do a four-year replacement plan for the student devices. We all agree that a four-year is the best. After that, they're kind of, one, Google only supports them for five years at max for the updates, so we've been doing a four-year and that's about as long as you can go before batteries start really failing and being used for that period of time before you really do need to replace them.
And there's no licensing expenses?
Uh, it's a one-time licensing fee.
One time?
One time.
And we've already paid that?
Uh, which we already paid that.
Thank you, sir. Happy Thanksgiving to you and your family.
Thank you.
Please be safe and healthy.
Yes, sure, if there's anything else needs to be brought up.
So on our 4.01 discussion, update on return to school. It's on our paper, it's on the paper agenda. Thank you. So as you know, well, I'll let Ms. Pass tell you.
Okay, so since we have closed school and we made that decision on Monday, I spoke with Dr. Ciutola throughout the weekend, we received the daily metrics. I absolutely feel like we made the best decision and we actually held off as long as we possibly could. But the rates in Queens County have really skyrocketed and now the seven-day positivity rate is 8.7, which is the highest, highest it's been this month, and the seven-day case rate is 25.2%. So we're really up there and Mrs. Morissette, if you have anything to add, please do so. With being a small county, our numbers are really high. I know that in some of the neighboring counties, they've been a little bit lower, but I know that Talbot has also decided to go all virtual. And so we look at all of that data, that makes a difference. One thing that I really also look at are just the raw numbers and how the positive cases have changed along with the percentage. And now, just this week, we have about five, five to six staff members and several students. So when you think about the health and safety of all, all of our Queens County Public School family, it's really spreading like wildfire. And, you know, no matter what we do in the schools, we use every, you know, every mechanism we can for cleaning, there's a lot of other things that happen in the community that bring it into the schools and we really want to try and keep our staff and students safe. So we did shut down and a letter will go out to parents. I just talked to Jeff about sending that out either Friday or Monday. And a decision will be made about bringing students back for small group instruction. But again, it will be based on the number of cases that we have, active cases with our staff and with our students will also be based on the metrics as well. And just as anticipated, after the Thanksgiving holiday, it's probably going to be a little higher, but it's been really, really high this week. And I know Ms. Morissette had mentioned when she came in that every testing site has been full with folks trying to get tested. So I absolutely feel like we made the best decision and we really want to continue to monitor it as closely as we possibly can. So the Friday after Thanksgiving, we will send parents, that's the 27th, we'll send them an update whether or not we will resume small group instruction or if we will continue with all virtual. And the, all the health metrics pretty, pretty much say at 15, need to shut down and we, we went a little bit further, we went to 20. But it was, you know, it was four cases, but those four cases make a difference. So we will make that determination and working with all of our other stakeholders as to whether it will be safe for students to return to school after Thanksgiving with a small group instruction.
Do you want anything, Ms. Morissette? You've been doing all the testing this week.
With all the testing, we try to assess when we test the trends. So the big thing, regardless of what the governor has suggested, the traveling seems to be the big thing and people want to get tested before they travel and they want to get tested when they come back from traveling for the holiday. So we, we saw a lot of families who are testing. As far as our, our list that we keep of positive cases, it's a lot of whole families that are hitting our list. So it's not just a member here, a member there, it's, it's whole families and we've even seen a trend lately of several families on the same street, which is demonstrating to us that there are gatherings going on in neighborhoods and no one is adhering to the guidance. So we try to encourage people, keep your space, keep your mask on, you're having people in your house, they don't live in your house, keep their mask on, protect yourself, protect them. People want to do what they want to do, so.
Is that what they're, is that what they're saying, cause, they, you all think causes is, is the gatherings, too many?
The biggest trend statewide, we see when contact tracing is being done, they've traveled or someone traveled and came into their home, or they attended a family gathering, whether that's a wedding, a family reunion, a funeral, those are big ones. Football parties, people are relaxing, they're adherents to the guidelines.
Homecoming parties, we had some homecoming parties here.
Yeah.
Just social gatherings, you know, there were, that's when we were seeing it, the trends, you know, in, with the staff members, if several were together, then it just seems to be. And what's really difficult, and I don't think people realize that, is that once you've had that exposure, that's 14 days that we're, we've lost a staff member. So, you know, say a student or a staff member comes into school and we do the tracing and they come in contact with another one, that's another one for another 14 days. And there's no way we can continue to staff, we're already shorthanded, there's no way we can continue to staff, you know, with the, with the growing numbers. So it makes it a little bit more difficult. So, you know, we love to get kids back in school, but we also love it for it to be safe for, for families to send their kids to school and we want our staff members to be safe as well, too.
And our guidance, when we test, we make sure to tell folks, until your result comes back, you should be quarantining. And we get a lot of pushback about that. They want to continue to do their normal activities until they have a result.
But even if they're tested and it comes back negative, they still need to be quarantined. So we, we have staff members who've been out, you know, for like two weeks. So.
Okay, and let's hope everyone stays safe and, and healthy.
And in the letter that I'll be sending out, I mean, we're still working and we're still making plans for when we bring back students. So it will mention some of the things that we've done, we met with principals today, we talked about supporting students, especially our seniors who are about to graduate, who are having some, you know, some, some issues or just not signing on. We are looking at the elementary and middle school with providing some additional supports for small groups. We've added substitutes, I know that Ms. Bass has been really working diligently with that and I know Ms. Pullen has been working with, you know, OSHA. And so we are still working even though we don't have students in the classroom. And I think one of the biggest things that I'm hearing are some of the schedules for virtual and we, we'll have a meeting with principals. virtual, and we, we'll have a meeting with principals on Monday at all levels to revisit those virtual schedules, and, and try to really modify them and make them work for staff and for students, because I'm hearing from, from both groups. So we are listening, and we are still working, doing the best that we can. We did bring back EL tutors for a couple of days, and we still have the paras and tutors working with our, our students virtually. So we're really trying to support them as much as we possibly can in a virtual world, which is not, you know, the model that we're accustomed to, but we're really trying to make it work.
How are we handling our CTE students who can't get in for their hands-on? Are they going to make it work?
We try, you know, we try, but when we look at the schedules with, with high school, we'll have to keep that in mind. But again, it only affects one high school, so it's just Queen Anne's, even though they share kids, but they, they still, it just only affects Ms. Houdock students, so.
When we speak about looking at the scheduling, does that include looking at students that are behind in submitting their work?
So one thing that we'll have for you the next time is Ms. Forbes has really taken the time to compile all of the GPAs, the data, and then she's distributed that to each of the schools, and the schools have really delved into it a little bit more. So they'll be able to really isolate where they see the issue with students' performance, and most of that is just because students are not engaged. They've reached out to students, they've called students. I was talking, I was at Queen Anne's County High School just, I guess, Monday, and the assistant principal was on the phone with one of the students. The student was kind of out of state, kind of away from, you know, the computer. I also think a lot of students are still thinking that they get a pass/fail grade, and so they're not paying that much attention to their GPAs. So we've reached out to those students, and as soon as we can get students back in school, we have a plan to bring them in, and we have adult support for them to be in when we have a plan.
What about parent support? I know some parents are very much engaged, others, I wonder just how much so.
Well, some parents work, and then some of the schedules that we, we determine were not the best because of the time of the, the virtual instruction, the online piece, it was later in the afternoon. And so we're really going to take a look at those schedules and get teacher support. Actually, we had a teacher-to-send-a-schedule, high school schedule, modified schedule, that both of the principals really liked, it just didn't have the built-in transition times. So principals will work on it Monday, and we'll roll it out to each one, we'll roll it out to their school, so that their school will have the opportunity to provide feedback, and they'll come up with a schedule that works, so.
Current virtual schedule? Okay.
That, that seems to be the concern.
Are we also going to look at a different hybrid schedule that hopefully will work with the virtual learning students, if we can get them back into the schools?
Yes. You know, our principals are so smart, and they're really on it, and that's one thing, they really want to try and merge the two schedules, so that when we go to hybrid, there's not that much of a change, and then they can continue the virtual learning, so.
That would be great for the families, to know that as soon as they could.
That's the plan.
Okay.
We're working on it.
So we could talk on that about, maybe December 2nd?
I'll be gone.
Okay. Current action item, the independent audit report. Ms. Towers, do we need to make a motion on that to accept the, okay. Okay, so do I have a motion to accept the independent audit report as presented?
I move.
Do I have a second?
Action.
Questions, comments on the motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote on the motion to accept the independent audit report as, audit report as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Thank you, Ms. Towers, appreciate it. Next up, 6.35, the special educa, I'm sorry?
I was just helping you out.
Oh, thanks.
Special education, non-public tuition.
Let me read, read all this. Do I have a motion to approve the non-public tuition from August 1st, 2020 to Ju-
They're going to present.
Up, motion first and then discussion, come on up. To July 31st, 2021, for the following institutions. Budget source is FY21, unrestricted operating budget. The non-public institutions, Kennedy-Kreger Leap Program, $149,819.72. The Benedictine School, $222,521.60. The Strawbridge School, Board of, Board of a Child, $208,205.05. Pathways School, $87,898.28. St. Elizabeth School, $108,310.92. Phillips School, $95,858.36. Harbor School, $41,150.05. No cents. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Do I have a second? Questions, comments, discussion? Ladies, thank you very much. How are you, Ms. Jolene?
I'm doing okay.
Come on in. We have to do the motion first, and then you get the talk.
Okay. For the record, I'm Jolene Smith, Supervisor of Special Education, Madam President, Board Members, Ms. Pauls. I'm here to present the tuition for the non-public placements and answer any questions that you may have.
So we've been around this bend, we know about.
It might, when people are looking at our TV, you're on TV, smile, there you go. They're saying, well, wait a minute, is this money going out, is this money coming in, and why does it have to happen?
So to answer that question, it's, it's not, it's actually a multifaceted answer. So it has to happen because they provide, the non-public schools provide services to some of our students that we're not able to provide services to. It could be a complexity or a level of service that we do not offer here, and we have an obligation to provide that to them. In terms of, is it money coming in or money going out, it is a collaboration with MSD E, so it is money that we are spending for these students, but we're also receiving money through, it kind of functions like a grant from MSD E, where they pay or reimburse school systems a portion of the tuition as well.
So Ms. Towers, you want to chime in at this particular point and explain that just a little bit for us?
Right, the state has a calculation as far as when state funding kicks in. So the first $25,000, $26,000, it's all 100% local obligation, and then after that, there's a percentage mixture of 30% to 70% state. It also depends upon who is the placing agency. If it is a residential, then they will actually be responsible for that piece as well. So, so far to date, we've received $129,000 from the state to offset some of those costs. The total anticipated, calculated to be around $260,000 for the year, for state reimbursement, if nothing changes as of right now.
Does anybody ever conduct an audit to see if we're actually, the students are actually getting what we're paying for? I guess the answer is yes.
Yes, so we participate in all of the IAP meetings for each of these students. I actually go to the schools and participate in the state audits as they come up. They're audited every three years. So we, we are an active participant in that process, so that we can look at all of their paperwork, making sure that they are providing the services that they're responsible for providing.
Okay. These are all questions that will be in people's heads if they've paid any attention to this presentation.
Well, they have been paying very close attention lately.
We, we budgeted for, did we budget for the correct amount? Because we're in the middle of that, that $200,000.
Correct. In looking at the budgeted numbers, there is a shortfall, significant shortfall.
Yeah. And Ms. Towers noticed, has noticed a trend in the past couple of years, that the increase has been pretty drastic as well, too, so.
Yeah, this is huge over last year.
That's something that we're going to have to take a look.
We're going to have to address that.
I'm wondering, though, you know, with this whole virtual thing, schools closed, this is the, the top edge, or are we reimbursed on these contracts if we don't use them? How does that work?
So in terms of the way that COVID impacted the expenditures, back in the spring, there was an agreement amongst MSD E, as well as the local school systems, that there was a percentage that could be paid because of the virtual allocations, or because of the virtual implementation, I should say. Different services such as one-to-one aides that were not being utilized, they were not charging systems for that, and there was a difference in the overall cost. I want to say it came out to be about $88,000 at the end of the year versus, compared to what we were expected to pay versus what we actually paid. From July 1st, they, the state did mandate that all services rendered would be paid in full, and unfortunately, it's not really a situation where we can bring them back and then send them, because if everyone did that, there wouldn't be a school to send them back to, and then all of the, the local school systems within the state would not have the ability to provide the services that we're legally bound to provide. So there was some of that, and there has been an increase, and a large part of that has been because of transfers. Just in the past two years, we've, we've gotten four students that have transferred into Queen Anne's County that were already placed within a non-public placement prior to coming here.
So just to give you an update on our budget, we budgeted $485,000. The total amount on this list is $913,758.
But that total doesn't account for the-
Take away the two, the state money, right?
Right.
The, the state money is roughly about $260,000.
$260,000 for the year.
But it's still $700,000.
But there's also, is there any other under the $25,000 that we might have, or is this everything for the year?
That's everything for the year.
Okay. So that puts us at, sorry, calculator here, sorry.
Does that include homeschooling? Is there some money? And how would that be paid if, if a child is being homeschooled?
So that would be, that would be something different. If you're, if you're a homeschooled student, you wouldn't fall under the purview of special education under IDEA.
In order to get a, a high school diploma or an equivalency, there would have to be some proof that they actually gathered in all the information necessary to graduate. So there has, we don't pay for any of that, but somebody has to measure what they know to get an equivalency and graduate.
They have to have an approved curriculum, and that comes through Student Services, and they come in at least twice a year for monitoring, and they've been doing that virtually.
I'm used to asking questions that the world at large wants to know, so they hear it from the experts.
It's a little bit different.
Yes.
For special ed than it is for homeschooling.
You're an expert.
I don't know about that.
So in answer to your question, we have a $168,000 deficit, once state funds are budgeted funds, it's, I mean, give or take, $168,000.
That's not as bad as $900,000.
Correct. And Ms. Smith and I are going to need, kind of review her restricted and unrestricted budgets and see where maybe we can do a transfer.
And this is tuition alone, this does not include transportation?
Correct.
Transportation's on us. Which we haven't even gotten there, have we, Ms. Pullen? We haven't even gotten to that yet.
They're off the hook for a while here, the school's closed, though.
Thank you. Okay, so any other questions, comments? Hearing none, I call for the vote on the motion to approve the non-public tuition from August 1st, 2020 to July 31st, 2021, for the following institutions, as previously mentioned. The budgeted source is FY21, unrestricted operating budget to the amount of $913,578.93. Do I have any, do I have any, yes? Vote yes?
All in favor.
Thank you, all in favor, say thank you. Aye. Vote no. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, have a nice evening.
You too, happy holidays, thank you. Future meetings, December 2nd and December 16th so far. We are meeting with the two new elected board members on December 1st for their induction, that I have confirmed with Catherine Hager. So they will be here with us on December 2nd, barring any problems. In the meantime, you two are still on the hook for, to hang out with us. And then we have not scheduled any time with maybe, I'm waiting until the December 2nd meeting to start that schedule. I do have a question, and Mrs. Wright brought this up, public comment. Probably feel it's probably a prudent move on our part to have people send their public comments to the board email. Can you post that, Mrs. Wright? Have them send any public comments to you, and then we'll read them during public comment on December 2nd?
There's an email address that they can send it to.
There is an email address they can send it to?
Communitycomments@.
Communitycomments@.
QACPS.org.
At QACPS.org. All right, thank you very much. I think that would just be probably the best move on our part at this time, because we don't know what the numbers will be like on December 2nd. All right, anything else? Do we need to address anything else? Ms. Pullen, Ms. Bass, did you bring up anything? You're loving life back there.
Okay, could we just take a minute again to thank Captain Kelly and Mr. Anderson for their service? We have truly appreciated it, and I know I have not worked with you for that long, but it's Captain Kelly a little bit longer, and Mr. Anderson. You know, from the entire staff, we say thank you for your service, and we appreciate it, so.
I would like to add a comment, that we have made history, Captain Kelly and I. The longest-serving board member and the shortest-serving board member.
I think she falls behind Fay Lister. I think Ms. Fay was probably the longest-serving.
Oh, well.
There you go.
As far as I'm concerned, Captain Kelly is.
There we go. How about, how about in this millennium?
I just want to say thank you all, too, and the way things are getting better and better, I'm just, I wish, in some ways, I wish I was still doing this, but so does my husband, he's real worried about me having too much time on my hands. And so is my son, who can't-
He gets to be fully retired now.
He can't stand the idea of me being home all the time with him, so I got to go find something else to do. But thank you all, thank you.
Someone asked me why I did this, and summed it up. In order to do something good and not be something, you have to think about what, I think the chairman said, "You stand next to the chair you sit in," which was another way of putting it. There's a lot to do here, and trying to catch up to an already moving wagon was tough to do.
Well, we appreciate it, Mr. Mark, we appreciate you coming in.
But this is a good group, it had a lot of talent, and I hope I added a little bit to that.
We appreciate it, sir. And Bev, Captain Kelly?
Thank you.
It has been my honor and a privilege to serve with you for the second time.
Thank you.
And this is something, Mr. Mark, you are very true. It's very true to say that, because my husband asks me all the time, "Why do you keep staying here?" And I say, "It's because we do something bigger than ourselves." So thank you both for being a part of this. Thank you for still being here, and to Mr. Dick Smith, who is not with us tonight, thank him very much. Thank all of you, we really truly appreciate it. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Please be safe, please stay healthy. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Yes, I move that we go into closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, and any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. We also go into closed session to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Okay.
Questions or comment on the motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote, the motion to go into closed session. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. We'll close out in closed session. Thank you, Mr. Strate, happy Thanksgiving.